I'd like to call to order the work session for the May 7, 2013 meeting of Bowling Board Commissioners. Our work agenda has two items on it. We'll start with the 800 megahertz radio system. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today is an important day. Represents approximately about 10 years' worth of work by a large group of people involved to help improve public safety communications in Warren County. For the last year or so, a small group made up of two representatives from Warren County, the chief deputy, Tommy, Tommy?
Tommy Smith.
Tommy Smith. I was going to get to that part. And Ronnie Pearson. And for the city, Greg Johnson, our fire chief, and Chief Doug Hawkins, and myself, and Gene Harmon, and others at various times have been involved in putting together a recommendation to build a new 800-megahertz radio system for Warren County, which would include the city and all other public safety users. We're going to present a bit of information to you all using a variety of different people. Starting out for us will be Doug Hawkins, then I believe followed by Ronnie, correct? Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbo. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for allowing us to be here today to provide this brief presentation. I think what we're going to do over the next few speakers is to provide a brief overview and a historical perspective perhaps of where we have been with respect to the current radio system, where we are now, the work we've been doing that's led us up to today, and where we need to go beyond today. I would like to speak briefly on the history, if you will, of the current radio system. The analog system that we now enjoy was purchased in 1997 from Motorola. This system was used initially as the radio system for the 1996 Olympics in Atlanta. It was disassembled from that point. We purchased that. It was delivered to Bowling Green and set up in Bowling Green for use. We have enjoyed many good years of service from this system, but as all things, it gets old. The system was good at the time for performance. It was good at the time as a cost-effective solution to the radio needs that we had even then, and it provided some improved coverage from the system that was in place prior to that. But even when we purchased and installed this system in 1997, it had some Achilles' heels then, which have only been compounded with time. For instance, our current system has no physical redundancy in terms of the infrastructure. It's a one-tower radio system, and the problem with any single anything is that if that one tower were to be damaged by weather, by intentional act, by some other means, that we would have the possibility, if not the probability, of losing all radio communications for emergency personnel Warren County-wide. There is some limitations in terms of coverage. There are some dead spots that exist in the coverage that we experience today. Most of you all will remember a pretty severe bus crash on I-65 on the north end of the county about the Natcher Parkway. Well, I say the Natcher, yeah. The reality was is we didn't have radio coverage at that rec site, which was still in Warren County. And that was a highlight of the limitations of the system that we currently have. Just to give you an example, the current system has roughly 50% of the geographic area of the Warren County. We have coverage now and about 75% of the city. Obviously, that new radio system would expand on that. One of the issues that really has pushed us in the last few years is there is a technological life to anything that is computer-related and/or software-related. We began to experience that in December of 2008, when we were put on notice that our current radio system, there's an end-of-life to our system and the support, the technical support for that system. There is some components of our current system that are no longer supported by parts availability. Those parts may or may not be available out in the world, but they are no longer produced in quantities that our local service provider could guarantee that they could fix the system if those parts failed. If we had a catastrophic event that the system failed, it would require an emergency replacement of any solution. We've been told that that could take several months to provide any solution to our current radio needs if that system failed. To give you an example that actually occurred just within the last couple of weeks, and it's not an uncommon occurrence, there was a lightning strike at the tower site that destroyed a modem, which is part of the communication system. And although that component of the system was repairable and can be replaced, had it have destroyed the part of the system that couldn't be replaced, we may be facing a crisis today. We got some direction from the Commission and from the fiscal court to move forward with addressing this issue. And in 2012, we hired a company by the name of Federal Engineering after an RFP process for those services. Federal Engineering assisted us in the development of an RFP for a new radio system. That is what they do. They are technical support. They are technical experts as consultants for developing new radio systems, and they provided assistance to us in developing the RFP. The RFP began to be advertised in October of 2012. It was out for roughly three months, and then, I'm sorry, two months, and then we opened those RFPs in December of 2012. We reviewed for compliance all of the RFPs that were submitted. We determined that Motorola was the only compliant and responsive bidder for that system that submitted an RFP. And their original price tag for an RFP compliant system was for $15 million and some change. At that point, we were given the authority to begin negotiations with Motorola, which we did. We negotiated with Motorola on alternate proposals to reduce the cost. We obviously wanted to get as much as we could, as much value as we could for any system that we bought. We wanted to maintain coverage, and there were some important components that we felt were important to continue to seek in that negotiation. Ultimately, we feel like that we have done a good job in terms of that negotiating process. The details of the design that has been agreed upon through that negotiation process was a four-tower design that within that design provides 91.4% county-wide coverage, and that reaches out into some places that previously didn't have coverage, that were difficult to reach. 95% guaranteed coverage in the city limits of Bowling Green. It would require three new tower sites, and we can get into a little more detail, and I think Ronnie will discuss those three additional sites and some infrastructure at those tower sites. We would require some additional radios. But one thing that we thought was important to point out was, in all of this, we strive to get the best value for our dollar, but we can stand here and feel confident and assure you, this is a very capable system, but it's not a system with a lot of bells and whistles. It doesn't have a number of features that are available for these kinds of systems, but we do feel like that the system is highly functional and will meet our needs moving forward. In that negotiation process, to get the system that I have just described, we have reached what is a maximum dollar amount of $7 million. And that price tag, as we will discuss in a few minutes, may be reduced, but standing here, we don't believe that there's a scenario that will require us to exceed a $7 million price tag for this project. We are looking for other ways to reduce the overall cost by partnering with other community agencies who could benefit from the use of this system. We are also looking at using existing towers, which would greatly reduce some upfront costs. There are some partners in the community that we have approached, and I'm going to let Ronnie Pearson, the emergency manager, emergency management director, come up here and speak to those issues. Ronnie?
Before Ronnie starts, it might be important to reference a document that you have that was put together that represents the technical specs that Ronnie will be speaking to. It looks like this. It should be in your group of packets.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, whatever you want, Joe. But I just wanted to reference that, because Ronnie will be speaking to that a lot, but whatever you want.
Mayor?
Yes, we're good right here.
I don't know whether this is for the chief, for Tommy, for our chief, but what is our percentage of coverage right now in the county with the system we got?
Commissioner, we estimate it's right at about 78% in the city, and it's less than out in the county, somewhere around 58%. So we have a lot of holes and segments that we can't get to. In the city specifically, one of the things we talk about is in-building coverage that we don't have available, that this system like this will improve on, is when an officer enters inside of a building, sometimes to the construction, that you lose that ability to talk out. So that's one of the problems that we have, the lower percentage rates in the city and the county.
So we're going to go up to 95% with the new system, 95% coverage and 91% in the county?
That's correct, sir.
You take the county as an example, that 9% could be pretty hazardous. What can be done there, if any? And I'm familiar with Warren County like everybody else just about in the room, but that means we've got some dark areas in the county where you can't get a signal.
That's correct.
And for emergency people, even though it's 91%, 9% is bad, and if you've got a situation in that 9% section, you could be in a world of trouble. So what, where are we?
One of the things that we're going to do is, upon the implementation, we get the system in, we can physically go out and identify the specific areas. This modeling is done from what are called propagation studies based on those locations and where those percentages will be. They're very good estimates, but the particulars will not be known until we actually have the system up and operational. We have discussed with Motorola some of the options called in-vehicle repeaters, things of that nature that have helped boost that signal out of those dark areas to hit a repeater to be able to get that critical information back to the 911 center and the important places that they need to go.
Okay. See?
If I can add something, I want to make sure, tell me if I'm wrong. This 91%, that's guaranteed coverage. There may be coverage exceeding that. This is the guaranteed coverage.
That is correct. That's the guaranteed coverage. It actually may be better than that, but until the system is implemented and up, and we can test it, we really won't know.
Okay. When we talk about testing and during the things that we're going to have to do, with the city having 90, 95% coverage, guaranteed coverage, and the 91% we're just talking about, and I'm looking down the road, hopefully. The need for coverage is pretty strong in the county. All those guys out there by themselves in most instances, and in the city, we're really talking about structures preventing that figure from being 97 or 98, more so than any, what's the word I want to use, any mountains or any skyscrapers. While in the county, we may have units in a situation where they're down in a low-area quarry or something, they can't get out. And you may have answered my question. I don't mean to be repeating. What do we do? I would love to see us both have equal amount or over this figure here if we can.
One of the things, Commissioner Dinning, when we started this process, there were, when Motorola submitted their RFP, they submitted two proposals, a primary and an alternate. Their alternate was submitted in an effort to reduce some costs. They knew that their initial project proposal at 15-plus million dollars was very high. But the RFP that we put out was a guaranteed coverage, and there is a recommendation, not a requirement, but a recommendation for what's called 95-95. That is a coverage area of 95% with a reliability of 95%. And that's what they like to see for emergency services. The proposal, and I may stand corrected by the Motorola gentleman that are here, but the proposal that was their alternate was a reduced cost, reduced feature proposal, but it also met the 95% coverage in the county, county-wide, but that was a $12.5 million solution. The problem is, is every percentage point that we go up, the cost goes up exponentially. And so there is a balance of cost containment and coverage, and you have to give up coverage in order to recover some of those costs, because it's like a very steep curve. The further, the closer you get to the end, the steeper that line gets, and the cost gets very, very high to try to get beyond that 95% coverage. And so that was one of the concessions that we made in the design to get this price down to $7 million was give up some of that coverage that was guaranteed at 95% in order to bring the price down significantly.
I would also want to add, if the goal is never to make one person respondent vulnerable, that will never happen if you have 95.
Well, I know. I know that. I've been there. I've been there when a guy has drawn a gun on me, and I didn't have no radio. So I understand that. And if it's anything that can be perfect, and I know this can't be, but if anything can be close to perfect, I want it to be these radios and this system. And if 95 and 91 is as perfect as we can get, then, you know, nothing else I can do. But let it be known that I want that guy that's out there, that lady that's out there in the backwoods or over here in a building going in because the alarm's gone off, then get in there and find out it's a damn blackbird that set the alarm off, but you've got to go in there.
You, and Commissioner Dinning, I hope you understand that the four of us that worked as a team on this project, representing police and fire and emergency services and the sheriff's department, you can imagine that our interest was having the greatest coverage we could get. One of the things that Motorola and every other person in this industry will tell you is there is no such thing as 100% coverage.
Right.
They cannot guarantee 100% coverage under virtually any design.
And I understand that.
And so anything below that is an exception that you have to decide if you're willing to accept, or if you're willing to pay more to get greater coverage. We recognize that the 95% coverage at $12.5 million was undoable financially, and so we began to carve a way at the entire proposal to bring the price down to an acceptable level that we, as representatives of law enforcement, emergency services, and fire, felt that was serviceable while at the same time meeting a financial goal. And as Ronnie said, there may be greater coverage than the 91% that we talked about, and there's some reasons Ronnie will talk about, but we are all comfortable with a level of coverage that's guaranteed and feel like that, because that is substantially better than what we currently have.
And I appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you.
One of the things that was discussed, we have reached out in an effort to reduce these costs to both the city and county entity. And one of the things that we looked at, was brought to the table, was what was existing here in Warren County that we possibly could utilize. And two of the largest towers that we have belong to our local television stations here in Warren County. So we've reached out verbally, had an agreement with them, that we could actually utilize their broadcast towers to place our equipment on. I've met with, talked to both of the managers. We did site evaluations, and they have verbally agreed that that can happen. We do not have written contracts in place. It's going to take time, but we feel that that's going to be a very good partnership, and it's a great example of city government, public, private partnerships working together to make things work. The next slide that I have here is some reference material that I'd like to explain to you if you have questions. Understanding there are three options listed along with the existing agreement that Doug aforementioned there in the past, but looking at a cap, and one of the things that we did was take the cap of the $7 million negotiated price we came to. And that agreement is based on building three new towers at the total cost. We broke those line items out by the city cost and the county. Including your packet, you will see some, a breakout sheet with some green lines on it, shows how existing on each one of those breakouts, those dollars were met. Now, one of the reasons you'll see is that the county has a larger cost share of the total system. That's because of a couple of factors. One of the things, we have more users in the county that are needed radio, so the county is going to have to purchase some additional subscriber or radio units. There's some additional needs for some console panels at the sheriff's department that we are going to have to purchase. So the county's portion is going to be greater than an equal 50-50 split. So what we did is we ran those agreements based on adding those three new towers, and we ran those all the way down to our current goal is to meeting option number three. That's where our goal is, attempt to get there. As you can see, the cost split there, we'll be utilizing the one tower at Price's Chapel, utilizing WBKO and NKY, and we're building a new tower in the Hadley community, there at the community center. It's the most economical and feasible way to get it there, and those prices reflect that. A couple of line items I just want to mention there on it is that there's $6,200 there for a technical review of the final contract that would be applied to the city and the county to make sure that all the technical details, specifications, equipment is there to make the system work. The next line item is something I don't think that we're going to have to utilize, but we posted there so you'd make you aware of it, is some project management. Granted, a four-site system and over an 18-month period to put this system in is going to have some technical expertise needed to ensure that it's done correctly. We feel that we can utilize some in-house personnel to do part of the projects to ensure that some of this stuff is done, but if and only if we need some expert advice and counsel on some particulars of the system, that there's something laid in there to cover those costs. But the system itself will never exceed the $7 million cap.
If I could just make an editorial comment to go along with Ronnie's saying, we thought it would be better and more acceptable to have a capitated amount rather than having a low-ball amount that you always constantly change. We could have went either way, and we decided, let's go the top amount, and we'll make everybody happy because we're going to bring it in less. That was our strategy. We don't know if that's the right strategy, or whether you want us to come back here every six months or so with additional cost increase, which is not something.
That is the right strategy, instead of keep coming back.
Yeah. Well, thanks.
Just a note I'd like to make on the strategy. I'd personally like to thank City Manager DeFebbo for the two-day grueling time period we spent with Motorola in negotiating a very workable solution for both the city and the county. As you can imagine, coming from the original estimate of a little over $15 million to where we're at today, there was a lot of work went into that. And I want to personally thank all the team members that were there and helped make that happen, and especially City Manager DeFebbo, that helped keep the lines drawn and get us to where we're at today.
Well, thanks, Ronnie.
You're welcome, sir. It's a long way to go, but I did want to make sure that everybody understood where we were at. This option number three is the goal. There is a process to that that I want to explain if you would like. After the contract, we will actually have come in and tower studies will be done to ensure that both BKO and NKY are capable of handling our equipment. They've offered up land there at their sites for us to put our buildings. So once that's done and we can utilize it, if there's problems or issues that it's not, then we have the alternatives to going up and adding the towers that we had taken out. So option three is where the intent for us in this team is to go. So our next step, is the reason part of we're here tonight, is to help explain where we're at, is to get approval from you, the Commission, and fiscal court, and move forward and agree on cost. We will need some direction on the process of an official body to oversee this new system, and I guess the approval of project management, if it's needed, to ensure that all the compliances are done by Motorola, and that some of the things that we're not technically, that we're technically challenged on are done to ensure that we do have the system that we've paid for.
Right. I think next up is Greg. Chief Johnson?
Actually, heading me down to the last one too, Ronnie, but I wasn't going to interrupt you. You got a third of mine now, so that's really good. Okay, so we're looking for you guys to, the next thing we need to do is we need to try to get the approval of the contract. In talks with Motorola, if we get your all's approval, we can get moving on this process. In other words, if you give us the thumbs up, we think that we'll have delivery of the equipment by the end of this year. And in 12 to 18 months, we should have an acceptance and a new system that'll be operational. Even in just talks with Motorola today, because we've made some changes to the system that brought the cost down, there's not as many towers involved, they feel like they can probably do it, you know, on the lower end of that. So we're looking for the thumbs up from you guys to kind of pull the trigger on this and make the next move. As far as like having someone to oversee the project, Ronnie talked about it a little bit. You know, we've got a consultant onboard now, really, that we can stick with and maybe use it kind of on the on-deck circle, so to speak, if we need them. As far as, Jeff's going to talk to him about the financing, so I won't get into that. Going forward, though, we are expecting some of other entities in town to want to use this system, and someone, some group, probably a group similar to what we have now, stakeholders, so to speak, in the project, would need to help manage the budget, decide what the revenue streams might be, and like I said, Ronnie's going to talk about that. But this system, we hope, is to last 10 to 15 years, and over that period of time, it needs to have a dedicated body and a structured body that can provide some management and oversight for it. So Ronnie, you're up.
One of the things through this large process we looked at is trying to determine ways to offset the financial burden to both the city and the county. And since there's such an initial investment of both entities upfront, we looked at ways of creating revenue to offset some of the contract fees and the operational cost of the system itself. First of all, I want you to know that the system itself, the infrastructure and the radios, comes with a three-years guaranteed, no cost, once the system's been accepted. So we have a three-year warranty on the system. The three years, we will have some utility cost. That's basically estimated going to run about $30,000 a year. Granted, now that's four sites that we'll be paying for. At year four, though, we will be subject to some maintenance costs, and that's at the point to be determined, and we're estimating that's going to run probably, estimated $150,000 a year. So in year four, you can see that we could basically have to come up with an estimated $180,000 on annual fees. And possibly somewhere down the future, there could be some software and hardware upgrades that need to be done to the system. upgrades that need to be done to the system, but that's going to be after and beyond year four. So one of the things we talked about was, is trying to figure out a way that we could put some system money back into it from this communication system that we put it, because it's going to benefit all of them. One of the things that we had discussed with our consulting federal engineering was, they have worked many systems across the US that have a actual user fee based on a monthly basis. And one of the current rates that's utilized is a $50 per radio per month, very similar to a cellphone bill. So, based on those, that dollar figure, when we look at our partners with WKU Police Department, medical centers, ambulance service, other potential users that are out there, we have discussed in the past with Warren County Water, some of the others, so there may be some more potential customers along the way that we can expand to utilize. The two partners that's utilizing the system with us now, of course WKU MedCom would produce approximately $60,000 a year in revenue based on the $50 a month per radio usage fee. One of the things that we were trying to determine is what we wanted to do in-house. Is there a way for us to set aside upfront in years one through three to have some money available to pick up those maintenance costs in year four and throughout? One of the things that we looked at, that Chief Hawkins had put together and spent some numbers specifically, was if we put back $20 per month per radio, we would yield approximately $240,000 a year annually, that we could have set back for the maintenance cost down the road. That particular cost, again, should cover all the maintenance and operational cost in years four and five throughout, if we chose to go that route. But one of the things we wanted to look at is basing on a user fee of the system. Tower space leases, one of the things that we will, we'll be building a brand-new tower in the Hadley community. There is a possibility that through Connect Nation, through cellphone providers, maybe looking for community space to actually utilize, that may be producing a revenue stream for the system as well. We can go out, I have discussed with the gentleman at Connect Nation about being able to promote that capabilities, and he said that is a very good possibility. So there's possibly a revenue stream that we can name. Market rates now are about a dollar a foot on height of the tower, per month. So, at this particular point, it's hard to predict, but there is that possibility of revenue out there for those particular towers.
Before Ronnie turns it over to Jeff, it's important that for you all to know, we'll be bringing back what will be called governance models for the fees and how we're going to operate. That'll come in the next months, but we want to let you know that's part of the strategy. I'm sorry.
Before he sits down, I just want to say thank you, I guess you know you just hit a soft spot with me on these fees. Thank you so much for thinking of this, ways to bring revenue in for this project.
We were thinking of you when we did it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have to admit, this has been a team effort since day one, and I personally like to thank everybody that's been a part of it. It's been a hard road to get to where we're at today, but everybody has pushed in and pulled the card on their part, and I'm really thankful that we've got, had a good team together to work.
You all have done a great job to go from 15 million to 7 million, I can't thank you enough. Great job, everyone.
Thank you. This time I'd like to turn it over to Jeff and talk about the financing.
When we first started looking at this, my first thought was, how can we keep this off of the books as debt? But after investigating that, trying to figure out how we could do this as an operating lease, we looked at the accounting rules, I got on the phone with their auditor, just couldn't pull that off, so didn't meet the rules. There's four criteria. This project met pretty much all of the criteria that tipped it over into being classified as a capital lease, so what we've come up with though is, we're going to have a joint borrowing, I guess you'd say, we'd be co-borrowers. After talking to our bond counselor, we're going to pull him in on this to work up the lease document. It's going to be a GO lease. City will be responsible for its proportionate share of the cost, which was outlined upwards of 3.3, county would cover roughly 3.7. You can't really stick a lien on an 800 radio system that's county-wide, there's really nothing to secure, I guess, from a borrower, from a lending side, so the GO lease was a lot cleaner, quicker. So, the city would have its GO pledge of roughly 3.3 million, county's going to have its GO pledge upwards of 3.7 million. Gets it under, keeps it under our bank-qualified limits too, by breaking it into two pieces. We each have our own amortization schedules as well, so I'm in the process of getting seven or eight proposals from local banks and lending institutions, Motorola being one of them, but I've already received one proposal that's, that would be better than Motorola's financing proposal, so it's looking like we'll go with one of the seven banking institutions, once I get all those in later this week. So, I'm going to get with County Treasurer Jerry Pearson to look over all these proposals and pick the best one that's lowest cost, and it'll be on a 15-year term. County thought they needed 15 years, it's got a life of 15 to 20 years on it anyway, so it matches it up with the, with the asset's life, and so we're looking at 15-year amortization. And what we've, what I've tentatively planned on the city side, we've got the 2.2 million set aside now, we're going to use that to pay off, to pay on the debt service over the next 15 years. I'm estimating if we can get this somewhere between a 2% to 2.5% interest rate, that 2.2 million will probably last us about eight and a half years, and at the same time, we're going to start funding roughly $150,000 a year, set that aside for, to pick up the debt service after the 2.2 is exhausted, if that makes any sense. And by the 15th year, this will be all paid for and done. On the city side, county would be, I don't, I'm not aware of any money they've set aside upfront, but they're just going to be on a straight 15-year amortization on their debt service.
Final part of our presentation, then we'll be happy to answer questions. If you're like me, there's nothing like endorsement and know who you're buying from and looking them in the eye and see if you can do business. We asked Motorola to come today so that you could meet them and fill a sense of confidence with them. With us is Frank Galvin, and I think he goes by the fourth, he's from Valprezo, Indiana, and also with him is Ken Ackerman from Louisville, are both from Motorola, and they would like to briefly address the commission.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo. Greetings, everyone, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Frank Galvin, and I'm with Motorola Solutions here representing our company from Schaumburg, Illinois. As Kevin indicated, Ken Ackerman lives in the Louisville area here, he's our local account manager and handles your day-to-day needs in public safety and communication. But it's really been an honor to be able to be selected as the most responsive bidder for this project. We've had a long history with the city of Bowling Green and Warren County, 60-plus years taking care of your public safety folks with the communication system. So, to be able to be selected and be able to have the honor of being able to work with this fine group of people that you put together, it truly has been a great group. You know, certainly we had our tense moments at times trying to get to where everybody needed to get to, but ultimately our goal was to be able to provide you with, you know, a compliant design, be able to provide you with the coverage that you need for your public safety entities here in the city and county, and also try to meet your cost goals. So, that's where we've been working from, I'm very happy to see where we're at today. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but again, thank you for the opportunity to be able to address you here today, and hopefully be able to continue our partnership with the city of Bowling Green and Warren County. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Galvin?
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, again.
Is that the end of your presentation, Mr.?
It is.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, I guess, just general question or comment. I want to echo, first of all, the comments that have been made earlier about the committee that's worked hard on this and put it together, it looks like it's come a long way, and that's wonderful. I'm assuming that we, and I talked to Ronnie about this, I know it doesn't have any, the bells and whistles that some of you would have liked to have had, I'm assuming that if we find things going forward that we just have to have, that that maybe can be upgraded and added on to. So, with that in mind, I'm happy about that too. It's a system that's going to last us for a while. With that said, it's going to come to an end in 15 years as well, so I would caution everybody not to wait till the end of the 15th year to start this whole process again next time.
We were thinking a five-year look back, in about five years, we would start thinking all in again. Especially with technology today. I too want to echo what people have said, because I know the process that's occurred, I mean, the goals that you set for price, for coverage, for cooperation, this to me epitomizes what I consider the goal of cooperation and coordination between city and county government, and I want to thank Ronnie and Doug and Greg and Mr. Chief Deputy back there. Thank y'all for your work, I know it's really hard, and you're going to get rewarded by being on the four-person committee that we set up to do that, you know that, don't you? That's the plan, so I know it's a lot of work. Mr. DeFebo, I know you've taken lead in this effort, and it has shown, it's outstanding response to what we wanted here.
Safety first for all of these individuals. Two or three of us up here has been involved in similar roles, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I want that radio to be available, if it costs $5 or $10, if it's going to protect that person that has got it on their side, and that's what I want.
Well, going forward, our next bit of action is to have the first reading of an ordinance of some sort. Gene and Jeff and others have to work on that at our next commission meeting. Mr. Galvin and his organization have certain corporate goals, they would like for us by the first week of June to have a formalized commitment, because they have other, you know, other needs too corporately. We think we can meet that given with today's feedback, but we'll have at least one, if not two votes between now and June 6, D-Day, so.
All right. Thank you all very much. I'm going to move now to the update related to our Steeplechase way, sidewalk project.
Thank you. Just Mayor, by way of why we're here today, somewhat, a short time ago, I think it was in March, or maybe earlier, we were asked to survey the neighborhood in the Steeplechase area to get their increased input about the desire to put a small sidewalk along Steeplechase. Just by way of preliminary background, we started the sidewalk program in the city of Bowling Green based on a strong commitment from city leaders since 2007 to make this more of a walkable community. From an urban planning point of view, if you notice downtown and all the new subdivisions, you have sidewalks as a matter of rote, but there was a period of planning, probably about 25 years ago, in which the idea of sidewalks was not put in as a requirement, and today we're essentially trying to make up for that gap in time in which sidewalks were not required. Since 2007, we have installed, or have currently on a construction, 44,000 linear feet. Anybody good at math, that's about 8.35 miles of new sidewalk that the city commission and others have put in for the citizens of this community to help them walk from one area to another. We've also, in order to make this easier for folks, spent about $167,000 on what was called a courtesy payment for when we felt necessary in order to put the sidewalk in to take shrubs or trees that were on the city's right-of-way. I think Brent's going to be the main leader of the presentation, possibly assisted by others in public works, and I think Karen Foley is here to provide her usual magic and help for you in making the decision. Brent?
Oh, sorry.
We're going to have, we're going to have others first.
Oh, sure, never mind.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo.
You guys changed it up on me. All right, that's good.
We'd like to keep you on your toes. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to present this tonight. We will go through, I'm going to go through some of the criteria and the program and provide some background information on that. Sidewalk policy, and the program was adopted in August of 2007 by the city commission. One of the vehicles for us to administer this program is through the policy that was part of the program. The goal of the program is to make Bowling Green a more walkable community, and that was clearly stated when this was put into play. We've been very successful in meeting this goal with the construction of 44,100 feet of sidewalk that has been put in or is under contract through this program at numerous locations. Our sidewalk policy addresses ranking criteria with an eye on gaining the greatest return for the dollar spent. The policy also sets forth procedures in gaining community input and dealing with obstructions on and off right-of-way. Mr. DeFebo talked about the inconvenience of fees that we have paid to citizens, and that was part of the program, and that is in the policy of how we handle that. At the time of inception, the particular street we're talking about tonight, Steeplechase, ranked 25th on the list of candidate projects out of 106, and it has risen over time to be recommended. Currently, there's 170 projects on that candidate project list, just for your information. List of projects, or when we took projects, recommendations to you guys on the project containing Steeplechase, it was presented in November of 2011 to the board of commissioners to proceed with that listing of projects. Now, back to the criteria, we talked about this, this is part of the sidewalk policy, and we have five main criteria. And what this does, the criteria is our yardstick, how we measure one candidate project against another. So I will talk about a few of these in particular. Location. Location is our measure of the proximity to schools, parks, commercial centers, or bus stops, and/or bus stops. High location scoring is gained with close proximity to these attractions. Maximum scoring for this criteria is 20 points. Steeplechase scored 19 in this area, which is relatively very high, mainly due to its proximity to, let me find the pen. Okay, the pen, all right, got it now. The Briarwood School and the soccer complex. So again, these attractions increase the score, and again, it's proximity to these. Connectivity is one of the other measurements we look at, and when we talk about connectivity, this is a score to measure the length of gap, the length required to fill in a gap in a sidewalk system. Logic behind this is filling in short gaps with less money can greatly expand the sidewalk system, so again, an effort toward cost and trying to improve the sidewalk system through minimal cost. cost. Proposed segments, proposed segments less than 500 feet receive a gap score of 25. That's the maximum, and proportionately less if they're over that 500 feet. In this case, Steeplechase scored a, just about a 20 for connectivity. So if we look at this, the yellow is existing sidewalks. We have a piece here. We have the Greenway system out on Lover's Lane. The green is what is proposed with this project, Steeplechase. Don't have a slide on this. There's another measure for financial, the criteria, and that's for projects that might receive external funding. There's little to none located, or ranked in our projects, so it's a moot point across Technical feasibility is another measure. It's one of the other of the five criteria that we use. And what we're looking at is the difficulty of construction. So with this measure, we're looking at the need to install curbing, do drainage improvements. We're changing the flow of water, so we may have to do drainage improvements. Utility conflicts, the amount of grading, if we're having to cut into an embankment or build retaining walls. The idea, again, the easier the project is, the more or less, the cheaper it's going to be. This Steeplechase scored 16 out of the maximum 20 points, relatively high, and that's largely due to limited amounts. We, the curb's already in, there's drainage changes would not be required. And again, another way to think about technical feasibility is really the unit cost of a project. These are hard numbers from our bid. The Steeplechase project, we took the total price for that, divided by the length, and we came up with $24.75 per foot of constructed sidewalk. These are actual numbers. Out of the remainder of the bid, we had two more locations. Taking the balance of the project, dividing by that length, we come up with $87.17. So about, a little over three times the amount for the other projects that we have proposed compared to this. But these would have ranked lower in that criteria. The last one we'll talk about is walkability, and that will conclude our five criteria. Walkability is a measure of impedance that a pedestrian would face walking along a road. So the higher the traffic, the more impedance they would have, the more safety issues, safety concerns we would have. We did traffic counts along this stretch of road. We did Steeplechase from Ironwood to Wood Hollow, and we also did from Wood Hollow to Hard Scuffle. We found 1,583 vehicles on the first and 2,172. ADT stands for average daily traffic. So this was based off a seven-day count, and we averaged out, so very good data. We didn't see any anomalies in the data, very clean. Now, what does that mean? How does that compare to other streets? We have a database of counts that we do. We keep this over time, and we will come back to that for various reasons when we're studying particular areas. This is taking that first section from Ironwood to Wood Hollow. It's taking the top five ranked by the ADT above and top five below, just to give you an idea of other streets that would experience similar volumes. And then, the block from Wood Hollow to Hard Scuffle, a little higher, 2,172 ADT. Some other names you might recognize over there on this, Grotter Pond, Whispering Hills, and you have those in front of you. So that's a snapshot of the policy, the criteria, how we rank stuff, why we rank stuff, and this is out of our policy. Brent's going to talk about our additional steps that we have taken beyond this at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this afternoon. Jeff laid out what the policy is, why this project was chosen, and I'm here to talk about what we've done to inform the citizens about the project. So that's kind of where we're split on this. This was originally, as Jeff said, presented to the City Commission, November 2011, as part of the FY12 sidewalk program. It was presented, described, and we went forward after that. As part of the policy, we did an open house. Those were mailed out in January, and the open house was actually held in February down at the Bowling Green Parks and Rec. Now, whenever we do this, we do these as group projects. So this project, as part of this open house, was actually held with the Ogden and Lehman project. All right? Now, so at this open house, we didn't have any attendees from the Steeplechase area, but we did have attendees from the Ogden and Lehman projects. So people were notified, people came out. It's a voluntary, it's a very informal process, they'll have some exhibits set up, and just try to help citizens understand what we're trying to do here. So we move forward with design. Kyle goes out, Rob goes out and surveys, Kyle starts drawing lines on paper, getting everything ready. And then we come back in January 2013, and our legal department starts sending out the notice to acquire property. Sometimes we have to buy easements, temporary easements, right-of-way, things like that. We try to keep projects on our right-of-way as much as possible, but sometimes it just doesn't allow that. So we started notifying that we were, you know, going to be purchasing some property. And then the project was bid in January. It comes before you all in February for award. You awarded the project, but held this project. Whenever I say project, I'm talking about the combination. You awarded the rest of the contract, one of them's already been built, but Steeplechase has been held in abeyance. And right there is where our policy stops. Everything from that point forward was because of your request to us. Okay? So this is an additional effort that we have made to make sure the citizens were informed, knew what the project was, and gave the opportunity to provide feedback to us. So now, I can stand before you and provide that feedback to you all. So we sent a notice on March 5th about a public meeting. We did another public meeting at Briarwood Elementary. We had six attendees representing five properties. We held that on March 12th at the library. We were there for a few hours, and we were able to go over the policy, just like Jeff just did, kind of talk about why we do this, where all this comes from, that sort of thing. Had some exhibits, some drawings, some maps, some pictures, those types of things, so we could kind of explain what this is. There was a lot of question and answer, a lot of it related to design, design-specific. What are you going to do at this corner? What's the width going to be? Those types of things. And we'll talk a little bit more about those later. So we finished that, where we're there, and we talk about that we're going to be doing a survey. And we actually had the comment card, just like you see here. We're telling them, we're going to mail this out to you, send it back. We're going to count all these. If you don't send it back, we're going to assume that you support the project. So we go back, we draft a letter, and you all should have a copy of the letter, and that's just a, that was a boilerplate memo that we'd sent out to all the property owners, and saying, we're going, we've given you this comment card. Please let us know how you feel. There's a space on the back for comments. Please send it back to us. I support the project, I do not support the project. Pretty straightforward. So we got those back around April 1st. That was also Easter, so we had Good Friday, the holidays in there, so I think they all finally came in by about April 3rd or 4th. We counted every response that we received. We received some by letter, some by email. You know, I lost my card, but here, here's my vote. We counted everything that we got, and I'm going to go over that. The letters and the comment cards were sent to the HOA boundary. And whenever you saw the map earlier, and you saw those two strips of existing sidewalk on Steeplechase, that is not in the HOA boundary. Everything from that point to Lover's Lane is the HOA. That was the part that was originally developed. The other section was developed at a later time. So that's the HOA boundary. That's who we contacted. We had worked with the HOA to get their database from the beginning, from the original mailout. So we mailed out 69 letters and comment cards. Post office was nice enough to send five of them back to us, so we actually have a total census of 64. So that's our, that's our magic number, 64. And we sent these to owners and renters. So whenever we looked at the database, if the mailing address was separate from the property address, and we were assuming that that was a rental property, we sent one to the occupant. I think you all have an occupant letter in front of you, so you can see what that would look like. We felt those people live there, too. They should have a voice in this also. So as you see, as we go through here, you'll see owner, renter, kind of breakout numbers. I probably won't talk about them as much, but they're there for you all if you need them, and then they're also in your handout packet. So total, we received 29 in support. 29 responses in support. 24 owner, five renter, and 11 non-support. We had a response rate of 63%. For a mailing survey, that is very good numbers. It's hard to get that type of feedback in a mailing survey. So if you look at just down here in the lower right, you'll see my handy-dandy Excel pie graph, 72% support. And whenever we originally established this, I think one of you all suggested a threshold of 66%. So that's what we were using as our mark. If two-thirds support, then that should be used as a gauge. So that's, that's how we're using this moving forward, is that a two-thirds or 66%. And now, this is just from responses. These are just people who sent this form back, either this form, or an email, or however they did it, we got it. 72% support, 28% did not support. And as you go through, I've made the colors consistent. Whenever you see the darker blue, that'll be support. The lighter blue pieces will be the wedge out, those will be non-support. So I know sometimes these can be hard to read. Now, I talked earlier about assumed consent. We put it in the letter, it's in bold, at the last line of the memo, says, "If you don't send it back, we are assuming you consent to this project." And I actually talked to a gentleman that owns multiple properties over there, and I called him and said, you know, "We didn't receive anything from you. I just want to make sure that you got it. You know, you own several properties over there." He said, "Yeah, I got it." He said, "But your letter said, 'Don't send it back if you agree to it.'" I said, "Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you for your time." He's also a realtor here in town, and so I talked to him again and asked him about the impact of this on property values. He believes it's a, it's another marketable attraction, another amenity to the neighborhood. I said, "Well, I appreciate your time." And I go on. So assumed consent, this is, you didn't send it back to us, so we're assuming that you consent to the project. So we have 24 that we can count it as assumed consent. So whenever you factor those in, that gives you 53 in support, 11 non-support, for 83% support. And once again, the dark blue down here, 83% in support, 17% against support. Now, this is the combination of response and assumed consent, okay? Now, during the public meeting that we held at the library, March 12th, some of the design questions came up, and that's why I said we'd talk about that again in a second. Option one, what we call option one, it's also detailed in the memo that you have a copy of, is Public Works' standard sidewalk design. This is, this is kind of the go-to. It's going to be a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot utility strip. So that's what they had proposed for this. Now, overall, that has a seven-foot footprint, seven-foot footprint. That's from back of curb to back edge of sidewalk. So you're looking at seven feet there. Some of the neighbors were concerned about the depth of their front yards, that that was too much. So that's why we presented some additional options whenever we sent the memo out. But this was option one in the memo, and this is what we're referring to as option one, I've given you a picture there. This is actually from a sidewalk project that we have done over on Gilbert. If you're standing on church, looking up Gilbert, that's what this project is. So option two was still a five-foot sidewalk, but no utility strip. So all we've done is gotten rid of the grass strip and moved it all the way to the back edge of the curb. So your footprint here is five feet. This is on Fields Drive. Generally, you see these more in downtown, commercial areas, those types of settings. We prefer this way. This, also because it puts the pedestrian further away from traffic. So that's, that's the goal of that, is it helps put the pedestrian further away from traffic, it increases safety. So here's option two. Option three, which came up at the public meeting also, was, "Well, why don't we just match existing?" Okay. Sounds logical. This is, if you are standing on Ironwood, looking straight down Steeplechase, okay? That's where this picture is taken.
This is the right side over here. This would be the right side looking down. The school side's here.
Yes, the school would be over here, Lover's Lane, you would get to Lover's Lane this way, and Ironwood back into Briarwood would be off to your left. Whenever I talked earlier about the existing sidewalk, this is a picture of that existing sidewalk that's already on Steeplechase. So that came up, but why don't we match existing? Existing is 42-inch sidewalk with an 18-inch utility strip. You still end up with a five-foot footprint, but you're narrowing down your sidewalk, and you're narrowing down your utility strip. So those are the three options that were proposed to the neighbors, and here's the results. We received 29 responses. You can see the breakout there between owner and renter. Of the 29, four had selected that they were not in support of the project, but still selected a done, design option. And in their comments, they said, "I don't support the project, but if it does move forward, I would prefer to see option two, option three." We felt that those concerns should still be counted, so that was put into the database, so those are still counted. So you can't really match numbers back and forth, because you're going to have some yays, some nos in this here. So here's your actual, these are responses, only responses. 12 responded for option one, 11 for option two, and six for option three. So it's kind of tight there, between one and two. And I grouped these together this way, and I'll explain why in just a second. Because whenever you factor in the assumed consent, then in the letter, it says, "We'll continue, if you do not respond, we are assuming that you consent with the project as planned." The planned project was option one. So if you factor in assumed consent for option one, that adds another 24 responses, or 24 in support of option one, with assumed consent. And whenever you add that, now it makes it 36 to 11 to 6. Here's your breakout, 68% on option one, 21% on option two, and 11% on option three. So we still meet our threshold there, but I want to make sure that you understood that it was tight under responses, but the assumed consent really broadened that gap. So in conclusion, just to kind of wrap some of this up, and then we can have some discussion. The project was recommended and approved in November 2011. It was bid in 2013. We did the additional public contact in March of 2013. We met the threshold of the established 66%. We gave that, you know, we surveyed the community and also got that support. So now, we're here to see what your recommendation is for us moving forward with this project. The contract is still held open, and we're just here waiting to see what you all have.
Do you might have any questions for Mr. Childers, Mr. Denny?
Brent, this is a lot clearer picture to me than the prior picture. Clear from a standpoint that by the breakdown that you've shown me here today, it says to me that majority of the people, by a good number, wants the project. I, day one, didn't have this information in front of me, not in this form, I should say.
Understood.
And it's a good job, a good job on the staff and what they've had to go through, you know. I guess it's always going to be somebody that doesn't want something versus some that does, and the percentages here, to me, are in concrete.
I was going to do this for a long time.
No, I didn't think about that last night. That just came up. I really didn't.
I do. I agree with Joe and what he just said. I do have a question for you, though. What would have been the city's position on this project had that number come in less than two-thirds approval? Everything else was a go. What would you all be telling us today?
I'd be presenting you the same numbers. I mean, not the same numbers, but I'd be presenting you the information as it came back, and for you all to make the decision.
I guess, does the policy, in lieu of coming to us, does the policy address the 66%?
No. And that's what I said whenever I was going through the timeline earlier. Up until February, we had done everything that the policy says. This is at y'all's request. So, and that's why I say, I would have brought back whatever the, whatever the data said, you were going to hear it one way or the other.
Well, I guess that I just set up my next question or next comment by, by your answer, thinking that that obviously would be your answer. But I would, it seems to me that we should be reviewing the policy, and if it fits the policy, then you all should proceed with it, instead of bringing, instead of us having to decide on so many foot of sidewalk. And if the policy needs to be changed or modified somewhat, it seems like that's what this body should be doing, is looking at the bigger picture instead of individual projects.
I can venture an answer to that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
The policy as approved by...
The policy as approved by you all and developed by staff speaks primarily to engineering concept and the concept of the overall goal of connectivity of the community. There's always other factors that are beyond staff's purview, and that should be the purview of the commission, and we respect that. So to answer your question, we still bring the engineering results, still bring the policy result, but if there's other cogent factors that are more reserved for the commission, we respect that and will do what you want.
Just, with that being said, I still think that the commission should look at the bigger picture instead of the individual projects, but that's just one person.
In my understanding, I think, do I understand this correctly? What you're saying, if there's 66 percent of the citizens, wherever the project is, wherever part in town it is, if 66 percent of the citizens support it, and we select that, you should go with it. But we do not currently have that in our policy, correct?
You're not suggesting this, that we survey every people ahead of time, 66 percent? Do you use the same process?
Well, I was going to add to that, and same thing, you know, I like the idea of this right here, what we've done.
We can modify the policy.
In other words, and there's no reflection on the engineering department whatsoever, because we're going to be the ones going to get the calls, that I don't want a sidewalk.
Right.
Well, what does your neighbors down the road want? They want a sidewalk, and their neighbors want a sidewalk. I like the idea of the facts right here. None of us seated up here can argue with the facts. The pie shows that two-thirds of the people want the sidewalk, and I wasn't under that impression.
We deferred to the commission's political wisdom. We figured you would know what the people wanted. That's why we bring it to you first.
Originally, there was no, no response until they started trying to...
The only trade-off, I think it's a good recommendation, actually it is. If you guys like how we did this, this is just a little more work for us, but at least we have a record, and we're never going to get 100 percent. We learned that, even in, we were out looking, all of us have gone with me, looking at different sidewalks that people didn't want, remember those? We're not going to get 100 percent. It just will slow the process down a little bit. Right now, it's designed to be efficient in terms of engineering sufficiency, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We can change that process and that protocol to make it have more variables, if you'd like.
Yeah. Mayor, may I? You know, I realize, and like I said, this is no reflection on anything in our engineering department, but I like the idea of us being able to go a step further, if nothing else other than the little mail-out card, give us an idea seated up here, what the majority, and I hope that's what we're saying, what the majority of the people are insisting. If they're not insisting, and the majority of them don't want a sidewalk, even if our staff has said that, unless it's an emergency or has to do with whatever, let's don't put a sidewalk there. Hell, we walk out in the street, don't put a sidewalk.
You determine the values of this company. If you want that value to include more inclusiveness and more outreach to employees, we will do that. Just tell us, we will do that.
Good customer service.
Yeah, you tell us how you want to do it. Since 2007, there was a different, but we're happy to change. This is not any editorial comment on our part, we'll do what you want.
Refresh my memory, Brent, if you will. Currently, forget what you just did, presented to us. Before, what was our process to alert the citizens that there was going to be a sidewalk in their neighborhood?
We did the mailout for the open house.
Okay.
And that was done before design.
Okay.
In that way, because it's easier to change before you actually draw the lines. So we did the open house, invited our band, usually we did those in groups, and then once all those issues were resolved, they moved forward with survey and design. And that's where the time kind of lags out on whatever you see from November to January to, then not around to the next January, survey and design.
In your opinion, to put the card in, like you just showed us, would it be to put it in before you even designed it? Wouldn't that help you?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to put it into the existing process, we'd put it in at that part because it's much harder to change. I mean, now, we're trying to change a project or potentially changing a project that we've already bid and have on contract.
Right.
So it'd be much easier to put it in on the front end, and it might help, instead of doing the postcard notification, actually do more of a formal letter, which I think is what they tell me we did a few years ago, before my time here, to try to gauge some of that interest. Because the postcards sometimes get, you know, if you check your mail on Tuesdays, that's when the coupon day is, when you get every circular and it gets caught up in all that stuff. So try to do it in a more formal process. We do it on the front end, is what I'd recommend. And then the time of sending this out isn't there. The time is in going through the data of everything, but I think we can still accomplish that.
Mayor and the other commissioners, the staff has got to make a decision on safety. If safety is not an issue, and I certainly like this type of format that we've used here today, and I know surely with goodness, we will have citizens out there that lives with this proposed sidewalk regardless of where it's at in town. If safety is an issue, they're going to know about it too, so.
And I think we do...
You have to come up here.
What's that?
If the mayor recognizes you, you can come up.
If, just please tell us your name and address, so we have it for the record.
Victoria Gordon, 734 Steeplechase Way, and I'm here today because it is a safety issue. And I just wanted to point out a couple things. I do walk in that neighborhood all the time, and I also observe the children that go to school on bikes and walking, and it's very dangerous. The curve that you saw where that is, it's really hard to see, cars go too fast, it's just dangerous. And if you walk at night, or you try to, you know, hop up and down, or get your mail in the middle of the sidewalk, which we all have to walk to a box kind of thing, it's also very, very difficult. And so, you know, if street lighting's not that great at night, it's even worse, but early mornings, that kind of thing, it's bad too. And the other end of it is the, for me anyway, then the health in terms of getting to Lovers Lane to walk on that walkway is just, it's just a logical thing, a logical next step to be able to do that.
Put the picture back up, the area that she's talking about.
You want the macro, looking down from heaven?
Yeah, yeah, let's look at it, because I'm a little confused.
I think the connectivity one.
Right there.
Yeah. So when you are walking along here, and you're, sorry, and you're in the street, you want to just point it there, you are fighting with the cars that are coming both ways, and both ways they're going way too fast.
There's parking on the street, is there?
And there's, there's sometimes parking on the street, which can be even more difficult. And then also in terms of the mailboxes, it's not wide enough really for a car to park, and then you've got two lanes of traffic going. It's very dangerous. So, you know, sidewalks, there's a sidewalk right at the mailbox, but not all along there in terms of walking to your mailbox. So there's that issue too. But just from a walking standpoint, it's really dangerous because of the curve, more than anything.
So the sidewalk is not going to help, it's going to hinder or create more of a problem?
No, I'm saying it will be so appreciated, absolutely.
Oh, so you were farthest sidewalk?
Yes, did I not make that clear?
I didn't understand. I thought you were standing up here, and that's what confused me.
No, I was so happy to hear you say safety was everything, because it really is. And, you know, it only takes one small child to get hit, or one adult to get hit, for, you know, for somebody to say, "Why didn't we do this before?" And my husband runs, and he has almost been hit twice on our street, and, you know...
So based on your conversation, I can interpret it that this process of receiving the postcard and the other things, you mailed back with your response?
Yes, I did respond. I would also say, though, that, you know, probably more than you want to know, but we are very happy for you all as elected officials to make these decisions. I think the policy and the program that you have in place and the guidelines are just fine as they, as they are. I would not say that it needs to be changed. I think people were allowed, and often, as you know, we don't come out unless we have something we really want to say, and so I think probably a lot of what you didn't hear from people early on was because they were okay with it, you know?
I guess my question is, and I know I've run my mouth a lot, is what I usually do, the process that was involved with you being a neighbor out there, did you like the process?
I think the process was, was fine, to give people the opportunity to come to public meeting and to return a postcard, and you could comment on any way you wanted to, an email, that that's certainly fine. The first is enough, in my opinion. Okay. I understand you have a lot of things to, to work on. This one, I would think, would have been okay where it is.
So you're saying the postcard, we should keep it the way, forget what we were presented tonight?
I'm, I'm saying that I, I think that people had the opportunity to say something originally. I'm not opposed to more citizen involvement, of course, but I think that your process already did allow for some citizen involvement. Okay, thank you. And that we trust our elected officials to do, you know, what's best. That's why we elect you, so I could be biased.
One more. Not, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, we appreciate it.
But I think that looking at the numbers and doing it this way, we get away from the squeaky wheel type of decision-making that a lot of municipal governments make because one or two people come to us, and we may get kicked out of local government places if we didn't listen to the squeaky wheel. But I think what we're doing here now is expanding it. It really gives us a good basis, and it gives staff direction. If they have those numbers and all this fits in, they know that the project is going to move forward, instead of having to bring, this was November 2011.
We have right-aways already on a number of them.
Yeah, but that was, that was some of my reason, but your comments were very, very well...
I'm supportive of you doing that, I just think that what you had in place was fine and, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, your questions? Mr. Febo, you have clear enough direction?
Yeah, we're, we're going to proceed. It will probably still have some issues. We will have to do some minor engineering in certain areas to make curves and turns, but, right, we feel that we have your will, and we, we're going to proceed with the sidewalk, but we know it will still be problematic at times. How's that? Long?
Yes, I guess that's part of it. All right. That's the, did I miss anybody? Anybody else needing to comment? That's the end of our work session, unless any of the members of the commission have an item they'd like to bring up? All right, we'll excuse ourselves and return for a 7 o'clock regular meeting.